Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Lackawanna City Council meeting for March 18th, 2025. It's approximately 6:30 PM, and this is the time we set aside for the council caucus. As most of you are aware, as I say every week, the caucus is a tool used by the council to review amongst ourselves and discuss amongst ourselves and ask questions regarding each of the agenda items should we feel the discussion is necessary. Then we eventually, following the caucus, move directly to the formal meeting where the voting takes place. And for everyone's edification, I would remind you that should you decide to speak to the council, that these proceedings are being recorded. To that end, the first several items, including departmental reports or administrative, so we will move directly to communications from the mayor. Agenda item number seven, the mayor is asking for a resolution, calling for the New York State Legislature to repeal the New York State Halt Act. I'm going to ask our city attorney, John Gawn. We haven't, first of all, I believe everybody in this room is aware of what happened with our correction facilities and have, as a result, become familiar over time with the provisions in the New York State Halt Act and how some of those provisions have impacted our correctional facilities. However, we have, as a council, to my knowledge, hadn't gotten any communications other than this request for this meeting today. So, John, is there something that you might want to add, both for the public and for the council members, as to why the mayor is asking that we go on record for this resolution?
Sure, the only thing I'll add is what has been making media in the Halt Act, what it did is it took away a lot of powers in relation to solitary confinement of prisoners. And as a result, and there are some officers in the gallery today, and some may know this or be more of an expert than I am, but they've taken away the ability to use solitary confinement to reform prisoners. And if, once you take that ability away, and if you can't really send anyone to solitary confinement, they're just, on a consistent basis, acting up or not following or taking directions. So, the mayor, along with a bunch of other municipalities and towns, received requests from certain entities. I can't tell you what entity actually provided this request, but it is to repeal the Halt Act in order that the legislation eventually get changed. But other than what I just stated, I have nothing else to add, and I'm not prepared right now to add anything else.
We appreciate what you have added, John. We're aware that the governor did suspend certain provisions of the Halt Act during the strike. However, this resolution is asking for a full repealing of the entire Halt Act, is that correct? I believe that that's what the resolution said.
Yes, full repeal.
Yeah, okay. Does any council member have any questions or any comments on item number seven?
If I may, it just says that the Association of Erie County Governments is demanding, she must have went to a meeting with all the other Erie County people, and she's, they're all doing this resolution. It also says that the rate of violent assaults nearly doubled after they implemented the Halt Act. That's all I got.
All right, thank you.
And this would be basically a letter of support when introduced, when new legislation is introduced to New York State. This would, I would assume, similar to like the offshore windmills that we had also signed down to several months ago.
Yeah, we're going on record as being opposed to the windmills, and we're going on record supporting a repealing of the Halt Act.
Correct.
Okay, oh, thank you, anyone else? If not, of course, there's a corresponding resolution to item number seven. Moving on to item number eight. Again, mayor requests the council approve a resolution amending New York State Senate Bill 2021-S9441. That deals with the Buy American Salt. And what's transpired over this past extended winter was a shortage of salt, which did hit Lackawanna and required that we borrow salt from other jurisdictions. And what this is intended is to broaden our ability to purchase salt on a broader scale by buying North American salt versus just by just buying American salt. John, anything you want to add on that?
Nothing I want to add, but I know probably Dan Gurkhan can attest to what you confirmed, which the Lackawanna also suffered as a result of the salt shortage nationwide.
And I was going to go to our senior foreman, Dan Gurkhan. Dan, anything you want to add or be heard on this? Because it affects your department.
Yeah, so what this Buy American Salt Act did, I mean, this was the first season it came into effect. What it did, like the two major salt mines, one is Compass Mineral, and that's in Ontario, Canada, and the other one is American Rock Salt. So, with Buy American Salt Act, we couldn't buy, Compass Mineral couldn't put their bid in for the county bid or the state bid. So, all municipalities, all Erie County, all New York State, all bigger private contractors, all had to get their salt from American Rock Salt this year, and they just couldn't keep up with the demand.
Do we still use American rock salt first and then use the secondary resources as a secondary site to purchase from, rather than putting our bid in directly to Canada versus US first?
So, whatever, whatever company, New York State and Erie County, takes the bid from, the lowest bid. Like Compass Mineral, their original bid was lower than American Rock Salt, but they couldn't take the bid because it's, they're from Canada.
So, it's a bidding process?
Yeah, it's a bidding process.
But if we, if we, if there happens to be another shortage, then we, it doesn't matter what the second bid is or it's based on availability?
Correct.
So, for instance, if America, if American is the lowest bidder and we opt with them, then in the future, this, this, what we're voting on today would allow us to seek a supply from Canada?
In the first instance, so it allows to seek a purchase from Canada?
Right, given if they're the lowest bidder?
Right.
I see, okay, but we would be open to options, whether it be North or South of us, North America?
Correct.
Anyone else have any questions or comments on item number eight? Moving on to item number nine, again, from mayor, I follow request city council approve recreation director position be full, become full time with a salary of $75,000. The position had been filled, but filled by Brian Langso, who worked at it part time at half the salary of approximately $35,000. And the mayor is asking that the position go full time and the salary go full time. Any council members have any comments on item number nine?
I'm in support of having a full time rec director. I think it warrants a full time staff member. There's so many programs that we could have and quite frankly, have introduced in the past, but given that the director was limited on the time that they're able to dedicate to that department, I believe that's where the lack of programs falls. I just had a few questions. I know I spoke with the mayor earlier, and I told her I didn't have any questions, but things came up during the day after further reviewing it. I do have questions that I may want to speak with the mayor with directly. I did see that there's a candidate in mind. I also know that this hasn't been posted, which I thought it was posted, to increase the pool talent, attract someone with new, fresh ideas. I think our city deserves a rec center that's fully functional and operational, not just status quo. I would personally like to see this possibly tabled or adjourned to the next meeting because I do have questions internally. But if anyone has answers for me today, is this going to be posted? Is the, does the position warrant a secretary? Is there anything outside of the proposal that may shed some light on the situation versus of, versus me having assumptions? And I think two weeks is fair to request in order to vote on this.
Based on what I see, and maybe, John, you could jump in on this, or Mike even. If the position goes full time and is funded at whatever salary, the position of secretary remains vacant then? If that position, which is currently occupied, becomes vacant as a result of something transpiring with the current occupant of that position, that position is currently budgeted and funded and is part of a union, so that could be filled. So, we'd have the full time rec position at $75,000 and, and the second position of secretary would still be a line item and funded at whatever amount it's funded at currently, so.
But is the, is the objective to have a director and a support staff? Is that what this is also proposing?
I don't think it addresses it. It just addresses the position becoming full time and being funded at a rate of $75,000. John, anything on that?
Your last statement is accurate. I don't have the answers of whether the Recreation Department would be a two-person office, including a director and a secretary. I just know that if the full time position was appointed today and for the remainder of this fiscal year, I believe the monies have already been allocated and it wouldn't cost the city anything. And this would obviously have to be revisited with the new budget beginning on August 1st.
Thank you. Mike, anything further on that from the Controller's Office?
No, I don't think so.
Thank you. Any other council members have any comments?
Yeah, this is my ninth year on the council, and all nine years, this has been part time. I just wanted to state that. And now, all of a sudden, with so many activities happening and projects that will be developed, asking for a full time salary, $75,000. Don't forget, if we hire somebody who's not here, there are benefits that go with that job, and it's probably, you know, health insurance, dental, vision, retirement. Now you're talking $110,000. So, I don't know how we're going to be saving money going forward. But as a councilwoman, Mufly said, if it's a full time person and they're, do a great job and get some new activities going and further on, it might be worth it, so that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Any other council member have any comments on item number nine? If, if council member Mufly wishes to have that table, you'd have to make that motion, or someone would have to make it, or someone would make a motion to deal with item number nine in the alternative to a table itself. We'll see what happens when that item comes up in the regular meeting. Moving on to item number 10, again, from mayor, I follow request city council approve use of Ridgewood Village Playground by Independent Health Soccer For Success Program, April 28, September 4, 5:45 PM, 7:45 PM. They did supply the health insurance. This program was run in Victory Playground, but they've grown out of that space and are requesting a larger space. Any council members have any comments on item number 10?
Independent Health runs a great soccer program. They run it at Odell Playground, Jeffrey Tiger Playground, and they also have done it successfully for several years. And I think this is a great, it's a great problem to have to outgrow a space, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Moving on to communications from Division Department Heads, item 11, from our city attorney, request city council approve the proposed memorandum of agreement between the city and Firefighters Association Local 3166 and to authorize the mayor to execute same. Any council members have any comments on item number 11?
That's the only changes to the firm's contract?
I think those were supplied to us yet.
Yeah, so the MOU would be the only change effective August 1st, 2025 through July 31st, 2029.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, anyone else? Moving on to item number 12, city attorney again request city council approve proposed agreement between city and Lackawanna Police Benevolent Association and authorize mayor to execute same. Council members have any comments, questions?
Yeah, I did, I guess. Somebody else is going to speak. Yeah, we got the contract, but Wednesday, Thursday, and some of us didn't have a chance to look at it. I looked at some of that, and there's, this is the whole contract as opposed to the fireman one, one page, that was easy. This one's got a lot of changes, just besides the percentage of the raises. So, I thought maybe that we could table it and so we could get more information, get a list of all the changes together and all the increases or decreases and maybe both. It's not urgent that we pass it tonight, so we can, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Bring it up to next meeting.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to read it, and it's a tity either, given that we just received it. And it's approximately 30 pages, and I would prefer to take my time and digest that. I know, given the procedure and the structure, it doesn't really allow for much communication with the city council when an item like this comes forward. So, hopefully, everyone understands that the council would need time to absorb the changes that are being proposed. And you only do that by understanding what's in the agreement, and that may take another, that may take till the next meeting. Anyone else have any, any comments on item number 12? If not, moving on to item 13, city attorney request city council approve ordinance of any Chapter 230 zoning of municipal code. And it addresses the fencing requirements. And a question here for our city attorney. John, do we need to rescind the existing ordinance or code provision and then pass the amendment? Or do we just pass the new code provision and that automatically amends the existing?
It's the latter. So, by passing this, this replaces the former Section 230-33. And therefore, you don't have to rescind 230-33.
All right, any council members have any questions? John, unless you want to just give us the highlights of public consumption?
Your honor, this was before my vacation, and I don't recall the changes, some of the changes were just language.
I can give you a couple.
So, Chuck, are you aware of some of the changes in the fencing?
I'm not sure, they weren't written to you on that.
For the public, it means it addresses the requirements for front yard fencing, it addresses the requirements for backyard fencing, especially heights in both instances. And for instances where the property joins an industrial lot possibly, but primarily residential lots infilling the terrain of the existing land. It limits it to eight to six feet in most instances, eight feet in some and 10 feet where borders industrial properties. And three feet for front, front yard fencing with the good side facing out so your neighbors don't complain.
So, why'd you ask me?
Because after today, we're going to miss you.
Oh, that's right.
Well, I appreciate it.
Not necessarily.
Thank you.
So, any existing fencing that goes by the old code is fine? Right? No immediate changes are necessary, this is all for new development?
Correct.
Yeah, everything else is grandfathered, is that what you mean?
We gotta go on the record with this stuff.
Your fence doesn't, doesn't comply, right?
I tore my fence out last summer.
Oh, I'm kidding. That's just a joke, that's not, that's not fact. Okay, anyone else, I don't see any comments on that? There's a corresponding ordinance attending that agenda item also. Moving on to item 14, Director Development Marketing submits city council notification of the termination of sale contract to 539 Ridge Road. And that was addressed by mayor I follow under state of the city address this afternoon. And Chuck, I don't know if you, you want to just give us a highlight?
The highlight is that since we announced the project in September of 2022, there's been one stall after another, mostly related to economic factors, financing, banks willing to lend, supply chain, changes in costs of supplies and labor. We, for the longest time, would have monthly communication with Douglas Development, trying to tweak the plan, you know, get something that works. But at the end of the day, as I think this council may remember, that site, the old St. Barbara's site, has no incentives attached to it. It's not a brownfield, not a historic tax credit. There's, there's no other offset, if you will, for the cost of construction. And the bottom line was Douglas Development could not get the money from their primary bank or a number of secondary banks. And pretty much at the end of December of last year, they, they stopped responding to our outreach to meet. And we felt after two and a half years, it's time to move on.
We certainly thank you on behalf of the city and council as well, as well as Mayor I follow, because that would have been a real signature development. He was willing to pay taxes.
Yes, he was.
Was not looking for an incentive. And, but for the fact that with, with inflation, et cetera, at that time, the banks just closed that window and was not lending money for any new construction.
Not at all, especially mixed-use developments. And banks use a thing called, you know, concentration ratios, and he is well-leveraged in a lot of projects, and he pretty much had hit, you know, his, his limits with a lot of these things. And in fairness, first of all, let me say, they were great people to deal with.
Right.
Okay, this is not, we're mad at you, a negative shot at Mr. Jamal or his team. Great people, wonderful experience. The reality of it is, the response to the RFP was in one environment. Over the six to eight months, we were in another environment, and that environment continued to go south to the point where it made no sense for them. And so, that's, that's kind of where we're at. By releasing ourselves from the sale contract, it gives us an opportunity to start over, issue a new RFP. You know, who knows, there may be some other developer out there with another creative idea, or even just infill housing as appropriate. But, you know, those are the conversations we've not delved into deeply yet, but the longer we danced with this contract, the less opportunity we had to, you know, engage in those other ideas. And time is of the essence.
And I think as a council, we agree that we individually and collectively had interactions with Mr. Jamal, and you're right, and we thank him and his company for their interest in Lackawanna. And it was very nice to work with them.
And it was genuine, we, we were not strung along. They put a lot of money and a lot of time into design and concept. It just didn't work, and it happens.
Thank you. Any council members have any comments?
I do have a comment. Not in regards to the actual termination of the contract or of the sale. I'm in full support of doing so. I think they were given a lot of time to establish what their goals were. However, I do have a question internally of how the termination is conducted. So, we approved the sale in 2022 as a council came before us, and I believe purchase was a dollar. We all approved that. However, in the decision to terminate, we weren't given the ability to vote it either pro or against. Just moving forward, I want to know what the procedures are, if there's answers today, should this have come before us to vote on prior to just receiving and filing it? It's open to the floor, whoever has answers for me.
John, I turn this over to you, but I don't know if we have an answer to that. I think that's a question that's been on all of our minds as to what the procedure is in this kind of an instance.
Sure, so I'll just state that I don't have a complete answer. It has to be researched. Prior to this meeting, I did look at the charter and the city code, and it does mention that, you know, it's the mayor's responsibility to enter into contracts. Obviously, the mayor can't enter into contracts solely and exclusively. It has to have council approval. So, this issue has to be researched, notwithstanding, I just go back to grade school and think of the three branches of government, and it's your executive branch that enforces the law. So, if somebody doesn't meet the criteria of a contract, it's the executive branch that pushes forward and says, okay, you didn't meet this, therefore, it's null and void. But I have nothing to cite, I did not do the research. I'm not prepared to give an answer. Do you have anything to add, Chuck?
No, just the, the train moved. It's, it's, in this case, it's done.
Understood, understood, but we also have to abide by certain procedures, and this may not be the first or last situation where this arises. So, we just want to be steadfast and prepared.
Very much so, agreed.
Yeah, it's a very, very poignant topic and a good question and a valid issue for the future. So, thank you, council member Mufly for that contribution. Anyone else on item number 14? If not, we'll be on to item number 15, Director Development Marketing, Chuck Clark, request city council approve rescinding action taken October 21st of 2024, authorizing sale of Sydney-owned property located at 3140 South Park Avenue to Amana Enterprises. Chuck, you want to give us a quick?
Yeah, tag teaming with the law department here. In January of this year, we had a, a meeting with the principal for Amana regarding 3140 South Park. It's a buildable lot that sits by the Dairy Queen, I believe that, I forget what the name of the side street is. What's that? Werrill, thank you very much. And it's adjacent to the former McCusker Tax Building. The principal was looking to buy the former McCusker Building to turn it into a medical complex. He was looking to buy the 3140 parcel as parking. So, in January, Mr. Gawn and I had a meeting, laid out dates that were all mutually agreed to in terms of getting information to close on the deal, schedule the deal, schedule the closing, so on. None of those dates were met. Mr. Gawn followed up with an email in January 29th, to which there was no reply. And we were all very clear in that meeting, the principal, Mr. Gawn and I, that these steps needed to be taken in order to close, and that did not happen. And before Mr. Gawn went on vacation, he asked me to initiate this communication to you all.
Thank you, Chuck. Any council members have any comments or questions on item number 15?
Given that the date hasn't even been met yet of March 20th, are we prematurely voting on something that they haven't even let reach its shelf life?
Well, I certainly understand what you're saying. I think the date was set for March 20th for closing. But if discussions and information is accurate, and I'm assuming it is, there was, first of all, no contract signed for the sale and purchase of that parcel. There was an understanding between the prospective purchaser and the city, in particular, the Director Development and the city attorney as to meeting certain criteria to move forward to a real estate contract and closing and a deed that would have, what's the word I'm looking for?
Revert a clause.
Revert a clause, thank you, Chuck. Revert a clause in it in the event that there's not sufficient activity. And those thresholds apparently weren't met. And John, was there an updated search or survey done on this property?
None. And again, all this can't be done within 48 hours. So, the March 20th And again, all this can't be done within 48 hours, so the March 20th previously agreed closing date is not going to come to fruition, and you know that today, which is March 18th. So that's why it's on the agenda, and I would just add, though, the entity that wanted to purchase the property at a later date, it's come to our knowledge that they're not registered to do business in Lackawanna despite they're a business in Lackawanna with a Lackawanna address. So they have to tidy up that as well.
Are they aware of that?
They are aware of that. So it, it's just all these factors, we know the closing is not going to happen by March 20th, and therefore we put it on the agenda this evening.
And if I may add one more thing, if you recall, when this was originally brought to this body, one of the driving conditions was not only meeting the sale requirements for closing the sale for our city-owned property, but there had to be tangible evidence of purchasing the former McCusker Building, because that was, that was the vision for wanting the land in the first place. And I, to my knowledge, there's been no sale contract executed for the McCusker Building either.
And I believe the council was under the impression, at least I was, that the McCusker Building would not be purchased by the prospective purchaser here without some kind of commitment by the city to sell this lot for parking.
I think that ended up being the sense of urgency that was created, and that's where the decision was made to sell it, but they, again, ultimately, these things all had to come together, because the concern was to not sell a buildable lot for a development that ultimately may not happen next door. This was, this was a tangent deal, if you will.
Now, there's been a communicate, I'm sorry, John, we'll get to you in a second, or you want to talk now?
Go ahead.
There's been an expression by that entity to at least possibly table this for two weeks, to allow him to come into compliance if possible. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that?
Well, in, in one respect, I, I understand our position, and, you know, you got to hold firm at some point, in another respect, you know, if, if the delays in the purchase agreement for the former McCusker Building are out of the principal of Amana's control, you know, we're kind of penalizing him for something that may or may not be totally on him, if you will. I, I, I don't know where 30 days hurts us, but at the same time, you know, three, two weeks, yeah, about the, the next meeting. So two weeks becomes 30 days, 30 days becomes 60 days, that's what we don't want to do. I'd say if nothing moves in two weeks, then termination definitely would be warranted.
Thank you.
But I, but I, but I would argue now, you know, we are well within our rights to terminate.
I understand, thank you.
I think the councilwoman wants to speak, and then I'll speak after.
No.
Oh, no?
I'm good.
Okay. So there, nothing in rescinding this authority precludes this entity from reapplying, making another offer, in fulfilling the criteria that they should, meaning within purchasing the property, but also registering its business. But they could all do that, and then come back to the city, and then the city could readdress. My opinion on this is, this should be rescinded today, because the city should be in control of its properties, not some developing entity that makes promises but then doesn't deliver. And I'm not saying that it's this entity, I'm just saying that the properties in Lackawanna should be in Lackawanna's control, because if another buyer comes within the next two weeks, it makes an offer for the subject property, the city can't move when it agrees, go ahead.
Let me put this forward.
Sure.
The city doesn't have a contract with this entity, therefore there is no obligation legally on the city's part to sell this property to this entity. So if another buyer does come forward, the city has every right to go, move forward with that new purchaser.
Yeah, I guess the request or the ask was to clear up what was previously authorized, so there is no doubt that the city may be able to move, and somebody doesn't make the argument that, hold on a second, you promised me that piece of property, that...
In a court of law, that wouldn't stand for a sale of real estate.
I appreciate that, meaning I'm glad that you're stating that. I get that the court wouldn't decide that, on the other hand, it doesn't avoid or preclude a lawsuit claiming that.
It, it, it would be frivolous, it's clear law in New York State, without a signed contract, you have no obligation to buy or purchase or sell. And that's where the city is today. So I think the city is free and clear to move forward with another purchaser at any time. We authorize as a council the right to the city to enter into a contract, contract hasn't been entered into because of the conditions perceived were not fulfilled. So as Chuck has stated, we're well within our rights as a council to rescind that, that acknowledgement, but that's all it is, is an acknowledgement that the city has the right to sell to this entity based on those conditions, but there's no contract, because the conditions haven't been fulfilled, therefore there's nothing, there's nothing to sue on, in my opinion. Not that there wouldn't be a lawsuit, because, you know, that doesn't mean anything. But anyway.
I do have questions now, so Attorney Gronn, you mentioned that the business is not registered, can you expand on that? Which business, and what would, what would be your requirement in order to purchase the property?
So that's two different questions, meaning there is criteria in order where it was put before the council in relation to, hey, yeah, the city will sell you 3140 South Park Avenue, contingent upon the fact that you're going to develop 3144 South Park Avenue and make it into what you've shared that you're going to make it into. So that is one aspect of your question. The other aspect is, as for the business registration, the city clerk probably has the most knowledge and information about that, but in order to have a business working out of the city of Lackawanna, you have to register that business, and that business has to be approved.
Which one are you referring to, though? Amana being a registered business?
Right.
Or the potential?
Amana has to be registered.
So even though it's an LLC?
Yes.
Yes.
So, so to purchase real estate in the city of Lackawanna, your LLC has to be registered in the city of Lackawanna?
Not to purchase property, but if you're a business saying, I'm working out of Lackawanna, you got to be registered here in Lackawanna. Do you get what I'm saying?
Yes, but it's...
So anyone from any other state can come into Lackawanna and buy property under an LLC or privately, but this company in particular has a business address in Lackawanna, but it's not registered to do business in Lackawanna. So the point is, fill out the paperwork, pay your registration fee, get registered, and then the business can operate out of Lackawanna.
And was this addressed to the?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so there is no harm, no foul if we were to table this, because we would still be able to operate if a sale falls from the sky within the next two weeks, that is, you know, meets the assessed value, that wouldn't prevent the city from selling, and at the same time, we wouldn't have to go through this all over again.
That's if the council president is correct in his legal opinion, which I don't doubt, but that's only if he's correct.
Anyone else, any other council members have any comments on item number 15? Moving on, item number 16, from our senior foreman, Dan Gurk, requests city council approve bid from Snowplow Doctor for Moei landscaping areas in Four Wards, bids are listed. Dan, you want to, any, any comments on this?
Um, no, the only thing I have to say is that I submitted this for Recreation Department, until we get a recreation, until someone takes that spot, excuse me. But no, Snowplow, Snowplow Doctor was the lowest bid in all Four Wards, and that's the reason.
And they were used land, correct?
Right.
And how did they work out?
There was a few issues, but any issues, they were resolved quickly, so I, I had no issues last year.
Hey, any council members?
Their, their bids are a lot lower this year than they were last year.
Yeah, the, I mean, they, it's...
Saving us money, Carl.
Gas is...
I don't have an answer, I don't know, I know, I know they're lower, but they bid on the same amount of work, I mean, it's the same amount of lots, nothing was taken away, yeah, so, yeah.
Same amount of lots.
Yep.
Last year, they weren't lower, I don't remember that.
They weren't.
Well, so maybe, maybe when we brought that up and made them bid lower, you know what I mean?
All right, anyone else? If not, then we'll be on the communications from Citizens 17, John Irving, chairman, requests city council approve use of portable restrooms for Lackawanna Fun Days, Jeffrey Taggert Memorial Playground, August 21st, 22nd, this year, 2025. It's a great event, it's an annual event, Mr. Irving's here, and we've approved this each, each year. Any council members have any questions?
Yeah, just that John's been doing this for quite a few years, and it's always been very successful, and I see no problem with it, okay.
John, why, why are you holding it on Thursday or Friday this year?
The goal of the Lackawanna...
No, he can go, he can talk.
Lackawanna Community Fun Day was good, if main goal is to bring health vendors into the communities of residents and get help. If I do it on, on like Friday and Saturday, like I normally do, I don't get the bulk of the health vendors that can be here, because a lot of them can't be there on Saturday. But if I do it Thursday and Friday, I can get more vendors, more stuff, although we do have stuff for kids, but the goal is to bring health vendors in there and information groups in there, that make sure that the resident city, the residents of Lackawanna can get help they need, especially right now with everything going on, we need people that need to bring the more, more healthcare vendors, job opportunities for people, whatever. So this year, we, we, so we're going to do it on Thursday and Friday, just to get the bulk of more individual vendors there.
Thank you, John. Any, any other comments on item number 17? Moving on, item number 18, from Kevin Heferman, Go Bike, request city council approve traffic detour for Go Bike Sky Ride, July 20th, 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM, Sky would be closed 6:00 AM until 12:00 PM, and attached a map. We've approved this in the past, any, any council members have any comments on item number 18?
I think we should all register and ride the Skyward.
Speak for yourself. Should have, should have mentioned that, a year ago, we could get a check.
They don't have power on that bike, I'm okay with it.
There you go. Anyone else? Okay, moving on, item number 19, Anwar Al Kalahi, President requests city council approve temporary closure of Wilkes-Barre from Pearl to Wilson Streets on either March 30th or March 31st, 31st, from 7:00 AM to 10:30 AM, observance of it, prayer. Anyone have any comments on that, I believe, I think we did this last year.
We did, and just for the consumption of both the audience here and at home, the days are not for certain, because it's based on the sighting of the moon.
Right.
So it is always awkward to say, I don't know when our holiday lands this year, it's a normal thing, so trust me, we've become accustomed to it. So the two days, it's either the 31st or the 30th, and prayer is usually just first thing in the morning. I did notice that within the letter versus what we're voting on, is that the request for, not necessarily police presence, but to block the streets off, because people don't really abide by the barriers, it gets a little bit out of control, especially if someone wants to exit or enter their parking lot, they're able to do so through their driveway and leave, if they need to do so without any obstruction of a barrier versus where a police car can be going forward or backward. So I was just wondering, I know Dino is not here today, but if Musk and myself and the police department, chief of police, can coordinate something that makes sense and is easy to do, I would be willing to do so.
Would you just suggest, when it comes to time to vote, to have this referred director of public safety for those purposes?
Perfect, very good.
Dan, do you have any questions or anything on, on this?
No, I don't.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to item number 20, Kimberly Smith, request city council approve closure of Alcoa Street from West Side of Olin Avenue to Steel One on April 12th, 2025, 11:30 AM, 3:00 PM, for the spring Easter egg hunt fest, this is done every year, and they do a great job, they clean up very well, and, and it's quite an event. Any, any council members have any comments on 20? Dan, anything on that? I think you set up, set up last year.
Yeah, yeah, no question.
Okay, and we'll get into entertainment licenses. Class one live music, Colonel Weber Ice House Pub, Lake Erie and Steel City Pub, and then in class two, coin-operated Winfield Pub. Any questions by the council, or any issues you wish to raise with any of the applicants in the granting of this, these entertainment licenses?
Yes, John, I do.
Council committee, yes.
I've been, I've gotten many complaints, especially about the music that is outside and the volume of it. I would just hope that each one of these would respect their neighbors, and especially on a Sunday afternoon, and I know I've been out on the street on, on a Sunday at City Hall and walked outside, music's quite loud, you know, I mean, not that I don't like music, I like music and partying, but if I were a neighbor behind a couple of these places, I, I would be very upset, especially if I had children and there were a party going on or something like that, so. Again, I would just hope that, that these entities would, would cooperate with their neighbors, work with them, and help with a compromise about the timing and the wildness of the music, and that, that our police department would enforce, there's a decimal code, only go up so high, and that's what I'm really concerned about.
Thank you. Again, class one live music and/or mechanical reproduction, does that also include outdoor music, or is there a separate category for outdoor, outdoor music?
Includes outdoor, they, they fill out the form and space, pay a specialty.
Okay, because here's the issue I have, two issues I have actually, is based on the information we've gotten from the Ice House Pub, we've had a, an ongoing problem with that establishment, and we addressed it with them, I believe, last year, and they, or the year before, I can't remember, and they undertook certain restrictions to the volume and the intensity and the hours of the outdoor music, because not only was it live music, but also was usable reproduction, but the speakers were just enormous, and the neighbors, I've gotten calls from neighbors, and I could hear the music over the phone. So I thought that issue had been resolved, and then looking at, at the reports that were submitted by different departments, there were, again, seven calls to that establishment, to the police, from the, to the police department for various reasons. I'm, again, very concerned about that. I don't want to keep going through this with them each instance, and then have the residents up in arms and focusing on us, because nobody's controlling the volume of the music, the owner doesn't seem to care, and when the, the police are called, there's nothing that's done. Furthermore, in, in Steel City Pub, John Bonatardi at 1449 Avenue Road, the hours he's, he's listing show up to 4:00 AM. Now, if that's allowable for live music too, which includes outdoor music, I don't know if his premises allows for outdoor music, but there's no clarification on that, and I have a problem with that at 4:00 in the morning. So I, I, I noticed both of those incidents, incidences, I don't mind sitting down with both establishments and getting some kind of clarification, some parameters, otherwise, I, I can assure you, my vote's going to be no until there is some clarification, or just a change of doing, the way they're doing business. Those are my... Those are my two cents. Any other comments from council members?
Both the Ice House and Steel City Pub have their, um, operating hours that they're applying for, so it's not just operating hours of when they're open. It's, the, the form is very specific, and both of them have four AM as their time that they're applying for, and that is very concerning. Even if it is indoor with speakers, it still travels outdoor.
It's a concern, yeah. Thank you. Any other comments? Again, class two, Winfield's Pub, I don't have any problem with that, but I don't know if anyone else, any comments? All right, moving on to business registrations, speedy one, Musayed Ahmed, twenty five forty South Park Gas Station Convenience Store. It's been called my attention that that address, there's over twenty-five thousand dollars in back taxes that are owed. And then the owner of that property has, I want to say, over five thousand dollars in back taxes owed on his property. And, and I, I believe one of the requirements is that taxes be paid, and they haven't been. So I, I'm not in a position to go along with, um, giving a yes vote on that. Any other council members care to be heard on that issue?
Is it currently operating?
Yes.
Yes.
And not under this particular individual, is it?
Under this man, under this individual.
It is already operating under this person?
How is it operating without, uh, registration?
Well, they actually forced the shutdown of it not too long ago, and his business application, um, should have been moved a long time ago, so he's been operating without one for a while.
And no one's done anything about it?
Well, the code enforcement keeps citing him.
And I find, I find him.
And, and on top of that, you know, and again, I'm, I'm going to go on record as, as saying that I rescind my approval of this because at the time I signed this in March, um, I was not aware of any of the tax situation, and I thank Treasurer Worthing for bringing, uh, this to my attention, but, uh, we, uh, Development would have never approved this. I hadn't known there was twenty-five thousand dollars in outstanding taxes.
My next comment, when these applications come in, area's department heads have the responsibility to, to, uh, do their research on it, and, and, and this seems to be, um, it's not a substantially reoccurring item, but it's something that really needs to be looked at after our back taxes, especially in a significant amount, twenty-five grand. It's, it's, it's eye opening. So I would ask that the department heads pay more attention to, um, these kinds of details so that we know what the city's getting into and authorizing.
Definitely concur with that, uh, City Clerk Murano. Just looking at the form, you know, it's a standard form that we all circle through. Certainly, I will take accountability to do my part, uh, but perhaps we should consider including the treasurer's office as a department itself.
Actually, she and I talked about that.
To look at that because, you know, with all due respect to her, that's her business. I shouldn't be overseeing her. And in fairness to her, she should have a say in this, you know, as well, so.
So from now on, you should add that to the application.
That is very interesting because I would imagine this person is leasing the building if they're.
No.
No, this is the owner? This person is the owner of the building?
Well, it's a complicated set of circumstances, and I just got this paperwork this afternoon. I didn't have a, an extent, a, a, a lot of time to look at it, but I have two copies. I do have copies of the Ds and the RP forms that are submitted. They give notice when the Ds are recorded in the Erie County Clerk's Office, the, these RP notices, fifty-two seventeen PDFs, go to the municipalities. They give the municipalities notice that there's a change of ownership. And yes, the individual is, the buyer is, 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 um, Musayed Ahmed on the RP form, and then the D also reflects, uh, and, and this is where it becomes a little bit dicey, is was a property Inc., and it was penned, penned in, AKA also known as, and I can't read that. Part of the first part, uh, sold and deeded to Musayed Abdullah Ahmed. Then his name was crossed off with the address of twenty-nine thirty-one Amazon Dearborn, Michigan. And what was added to this in, uh, cursor, or in, in handwriting was speedy one comma INC. With an address of twenty-five forty South Park. And, um, I don't have a legal description attached. I, I don't know what the legal description, I don't know how this D got filed personally, but apparently the Erie County Clerk's Office approved the filing. But I don't know what the legal description is other than an exhibit A that shows twenty-five forty South Park. But yes, that individual owns it, but under the speedy one INC.
So it's not like somebody leased a building, found out later that the owner owns twenty-five thousand, which would then penalize this individual. This is the owner.
This is the owner.
This is the owner. Uh, City Clerk Murano, did he pay his?
Fine, yes, he did.
So from that aspect, that he's.
Yes, he paid his fine. Um, he paid his registration fee. And, um, because he, he's been there since twenty twenty-three and never came forward, and I sent several letters, and he finally responded to the violation.
Okay, let me, let me just ask this then. There is, um, there's a citation and a violation and a, an, an appropriate sanction, usually in the, in the form of a fine for not filing a registration. Is that correct? Is that a yes?
Yes.
Yes. Chuck, you're aware of that?
I'm sorry, I'm not.
Okay. John, you're aware of that?
Yes.
Okay. Now, if there's, as we're talking about the business, uh, the two businesses in question, if there are noise violations and the police cite them or the building inspector cites them on a noise violation, that goes before the court in Lackawanna, correct? Doesn't, it's not an, an issue for the city clerk to, to address?
Well, it depends. They're usually cited with a traffic, or, I'm sorry, not a traffic, but they're cited with a ticket first, right? So if they get a disturbance as a result of, uh, loud noise, they get a citation. They could immediately pay the citation, and it won't go to court.
Okay, the citation designates the fine? I've never seen that. That is, that is, that's strictly an administrative function.
I believe.
I, I, the enforcement of code violations is a city court function. And as a result, there is no predetermined fine. You go to court and you have your matter adjudicated there, and an appropriate fine up to certain amounts of monies or possible incarceration could be sanctioned. So I'm not clear on, on all of a sudden hearing, well, the, the city clerks love the fine. Why aren't these people in court is my question.
Right, so code enforcement, and Chuck can help me describe this, but usually code enforcement starts administratively with a citation with a fine on there. If people continue to ignore those citations, then it goes to court. But if you get a citation and if somebody pays it immediately, the fine, it's resolved. And then you end up writing another citation for chronic offenders. But if they're paying the citations on a regular basis, it doesn't make it to court. It's only when there's multiple citations or ignoring the citations, that when it, that's when it gets to court.
And I understand it the way you described it.
That's, that's, that's not my understanding, and if that is what's being done, I would suggest to this council that appropriate legislation be passed, not to take that authority away from the city clerk's office, and that's not what I, I'm saying, but to put it in an appropriate form where there's an escalating, uh, sanction that the court can entertain, and, and, and not this, well, we'll pay the fifty dollar fine and just, just walk, and we do, do whatever we want to do again. No. But two other points I'd like to make, especially for the council, and, 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 um, that again being that, um, we need to take a hard look at how, how that's being handled. And point one is, we can rescind their business registration through appropriate proceedings. Due process of law requires a hearing and everything else. But for instance, these constant neighborhood infringements on quiet enjoyment of property can also be reported by the police department to the state liquor authority, and they're a licensing agency which can review the establishment's ability to continue serving alcohol if they violate these kinds of, uh, ordinances on a regular basis. That is also a, a more serious, um, avenue to pursue that the city, especially the police department, should consider for repeat offenders. These matters should be referred to state liquor authority enforcement division.
Even if it's just for noise violation?
Even if, but it's continued noise, noise violations. It's not just on one occasion.
But I mean, is that something that the alcohol board would even consider?
Yes. Not only that, but the one establishment had six, uh, police referrals.
For like fighting and things like that?
I don't know. I haven't seen a lot of complaints, but those kinds of, um, incidences and events are, uh, the state liquor authority is very interested in those. So I, I, I just suggest we start exploring and, and using those tools that we have to our, um, avail so that these, uh, we're being ignored and, and, and the residents are suffering as a result of it. That, that's got to stop, in my opinion. All right, um, any, anyone else have any, uh, comments? On the business registration speedy one? If not, then I call a meeting to order for this date. The pleasurable ease, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Maflahee, second. Anderson.
Here.
Moretti.
Here.
Sirdai.
Here.
Maflahee.
Here.
Development and Marketing.
Here.
Public Works.
Here.
Public Safety is excused. Controller.
Here.
Recreation is absent.
All right, and, um, for the public, for people who are here in the gallery and for people at home, please, uh, share with this, me with this moment, share with me this moment to introduce our new controller, Jackie Raymond Doyle. Jackie, welcome to Lackawanna, and, and hopefully you have a, a nice day here. We look forward to working with you and what you, uh, bring to the table for us. Been a long time coming.
Thank you. I look forward to being here.
And along those same lines, Mike, it's, his firm has stepped in for so long and has been, uh, irreplaceable in the meantime, and, and such a blessing and a help to, to our city and, and to this council. Mike, we thank you, uh, from the bottom of our hearts for your efforts and your company's efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Um, there's, uh, there's no hearings from citizens. Next item?
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March third, twenty twenty-five.
Murano moves to adopt minutes of regular meeting, March third, twenty twenty-five is written.
Maflahee, second. Motion by Murano, second by Maflahee, to adopt minutes of the regular meeting of March third, twenty twenty-five is written. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Murano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Departmental reports one through six.
Murano moves the, to receive and file departmental reports one through six inclusive.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Murano, second by Moretti, to receive and file departmental reports one through six. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Murano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Mayor, I have followed request the city council approve a resolution calling for the New York State Legislature to repeal the New York State Halt Act.
Murano moves to receive and file act on resolution.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Murano, second by Anderson, to receive and file act on resolution. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Murano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. A resolution to repeal the New York State Halt Act, which was created, which has created a hazardous unlawful environment for correction officers and incarcerated individuals. This is until it can be researched and revised with the input of the correction staff.
Murano moves to adopt resolution is written.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Murano, second by Anderson, to adopt resolution is written. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Murano? Carried five zero. Mayor, I have followed request the city council approve a resolution supporting to amend the New York State Senate Bill twenty twenty-one dash S nine four four one.
Murano moves to receive and file act on resolution.
Maflahee, seconds.
Motion by Murano, second by Maflahee, to receive and file act on resolution. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Murano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. A resolution urging the state legislature to amend the Buy American Salt Act to a Buy North American Salt Act. This would allow us to source materials from a broader range of vendors, including Canadian suppliers, maintaining an adequate supply of salt to keep our roads safe during winter months.
Murano moves to adopt resolution is written.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Murano, second by Anderson, to adopt resolution is written. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Murano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Mayor, I have followed request the city council approve the recreation director position to be a full-time position with a salary of seventy-five thousand dollars.
Maflahee moves to, uh, table this request, uh, for at least two weeks until our next meeting.
Second, sir.
Motion by Maflahee, second by Sirdai, to table request to the next meeting, which is April seventh, twenty twenty-five. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
No.
Sirdai?
Yes.
And Murano?
Yes.
Four to one, carried four to one. Mayor, I have followed request the city council approve the use of Ridgewood Village Playground by Independent Health Soccer for Success Program, April twenty eighth through September fourth, twenty twenty-five, from five forty-five PM until seven forty-five PM. Insurance is attached.
Murano moves to approve request.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Murano, second by Moretti, to approve request. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Murano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. City attorney requests the city council approve the proposed memorandum of agreement between the city and the firefighters association local three one six six and to authorize the mayor to execute same.
Murano moves to approve request, authorize mayor to execute same.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Murano, second by Moretti, to approve request, authorize mayor to execute same. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Murano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. City attorney requests the city council approve the proposed agreement between the city and the Lackawanna Police Benevolent Association and authorize the mayor to execute same.
Murano moves to table request pursuant to our discussion at caucus.
Sorry.
Motion by Murano, second by Sirdai, to table request based on discussion at caucus. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
No.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Murano?
Yes.
Carried four to one. City attorney requests the city council approve an ordinance amending chapter two thirty zoning of the municipal code.
Murano moves to receive and file act on ordinance.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Murano, second by Anderson, to receive and file act on ordinance. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Murano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. An ordinance amending chapter two three zero dash thirty-three fencing of the current zoning code and replacing it with changes to fencing type parameter fencing materials used in residential districts versus non-residential districts.
Murano moves to adopt ordinance is written.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Murano, second by Anderson, to adopt ordinance as written. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Murano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Director of Development and Marketing submits to the city council notification of the termination of the sale contract for five thirty-nine Red Row.
Murano moves to receive and file.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Murano, second by Anderson, to receive and file. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdai?
Yes.
Murano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Director of Development and Marketing requests the city council approve rescinding the action taken on October twenty first, twenty twenty-four, authorizing the sale of city-owned property located at three one four zero South Park Avenue to Amana Enterprises. to Amana Enterprises. Maflahee motions to table the request until next day.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Maflahee, second by Anderson, to table requests until next meeting, April 7th of 2025. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yeah.
Sardik?
No.
Murano?
Yes.
Carried four to one. Senior Foreman Public Works requests the city council approve the bid from Snowplow Doctor for the mowing and landscaping of areas of the four wards. Bids are as follows. And Snowplow Doctor came in at, for the first ward, $325, second ward, $385, third ward, $348, fourth ward, $490, for a total of $1,548 per week. And they were the lowest bid.
Murano moves to approve bid from Snowplow Doctor.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Murano, second by Moretti, to approve bid from the Snowplow Doctor. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sardik?
Yeah.
Murano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. John Inger, Chairman, requests the city council approve the use of the portable restrooms in stage for Lackawanna Mondays. This is a two-day event held at Jeffrey Taggart Memorial Playground, August 21st to August 22nd, 2025.
Murano moves to approve request for Public Works and Public Safety.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Murano, second by Maflahee, to approve request referred to Public Works and Public Safety. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sardik?
Yeah.
Murano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Kevin Hefman, Go Bike, requests the city council approve the traffic detour for Go Bike Skyride on Sunday, July 20th, 2025. From 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM, the Skyway will be closed from 6:00 AM until 12:00 PM. Map attached.
Murano moves to approve request for Public Works and Public Safety.
Maflahee, second. Motion by Murano, second by Maflahee, to approve request referred to Public Works and Public Safety. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sardik?
Yeah.
Murano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Anwar Al Khali, a president, requests the city council approve the temporary closure of Wilkes-Barre Street from Pearl Street to Wilson Street on either March 30th or March 31st, 2025, from 7:00 AM until 10:30 PM for observance of Eid prayer.
Murano moves to approve request referred to Public Works and Public Safety. And also refer this to the Chief of Police.
Maflahee, second. Motion by Murano, second by Maflahee, to approve request referred to Public Works, Public Safety, and Chief of Police. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sardik?
Yeah.
Murano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Kimberly Smith requests the city council approve the closure of Allcloth Street from the west side of Olin Lane to Steel Amana on Saturday, April 12th, 2025, from 11:30 AM until 3:00 PM for the first ward's Spring and Easter Egg Fest.
Murano moves to approve request referred to Public Works and Public Safety.
Maflahee, second. Motion by Murano, second by Maflahee, to approve request referred to Public Works and Public Safety. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sardik?
Yeah.
Murano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Entertainment license, Class One, live music and/or mechanical reproductions, A through D. Are you going to take them under individual or individual?
I was going to just simply move to approve A and C and move to table B and D pending further information.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Murano, second by Moretti, to approve Class One Entertainment License for A, Colonel John Weber Post, and C, Lake Area Italian Club, and to table Item B, Ice House Pub, and D, Steel City Pub pending further information, and refer this to Public Safety. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sardik?
Yes.
Murano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Class Two Coin-operated Mechanical Reproduction, Winfield's Pub, Tab Dalton, 1213 Ridge Road.
Murano moves to approve Class Two Entertainment License.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Murano, second by Moretti, to approve Class Two Entertainment License, refer to Public Safety. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sardik?
Yes.
Murano?
Yes.
Carried five zero. Business registration, Speedy One, Inc., Musayed Ahmed, 2540 South Park Gas Station and Convenience Store.
Murano moves to deny business registration.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Murano, second by Moretti, to deny business registration. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sardik?
Yeah.
Murano?
Yes.
Carried five zero.
Any table items or old business from the city council? If not, there's two things before we adjourn. One, as most of the councils are aware, and I'm sure maybe the public isn't, our relatively new city attorney is going to be leaving us for a well-deserved promotion that hopefully leads to greater heights for his career in practice and dissemination, practice of law, dissemination of justice in not only our community, but within Erie County, maybe even further. John Gahn has made a huge difference in our lives, in our workplace here in City Hall by his presence, his demeanor, his professionalism, his knowledge of the law, and his affability. He has been a pleasure to work with. He has been instrumental at every junction and every instance of every item that comes into the city runs through the Law Department. And he has addressed on a timely basis, in an unforeseen manner, for the years that I've been experienced and been here in City Hall. And it's not to demean other, or to take away from other city attorneys, but John Gahn has brought a certain level, a newer level, a higher level of achievement to that office, which is so greatly needed in our city. And in being a very small office, everything falls on him and fell on him. And John, I don't know how to thank you, not only on behalf of the council for everything you've done, for who you are, and for what you've brought to this community and to this body. We thank you dearly. We wish you Godspeed in your new career. You have only upward mobility from this point on, and it's well deserved, well earned. And again, we wish you Godspeed to that end.
Thank you. May I speak just for a second?
No.
No, I just want to thank you all, and it's been a pleasure working with you all. I'll be in the building. We'll see for how long, and we'll go from there. But I really do appreciate working with you all. It's been my pleasure, and thank you for the kind words.
And well deserved. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes, absolutely.
I enjoyed going to his office many times, and we used to argue about all kinds of stuff. Played devil's advocate with him, and we had a lot of fun. Good luck going forward.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and I appreciate our talks and our arguments.
I also would like to echo what my colleagues have addressed, and just thank you for being accessible, approachable. I've never received attorney work product and emails quite eloquently, as I have received them from you, and I'm going to miss those. So hopefully your successor is able to fill your shoes. So thank you for being you, and I hope to see you, and I will be contacting you.
Awesome. Thank you. And hopefully we'll be appearing in front of you in your honor.
Don't throw the book at us if you do.